Should I read all three reports? What if I don't want to just read one?
It can be three. I would just leave it on.
Hmm?
I would, we'd just talk about it, I would just. Motion.
I'll just, hmm?
Motion.
It's now six thirty, I'd like to call this, uh, June twenty-seventh meeting of the City of Monessen Council to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Councilperson Cosner.
Here.
Councilman Nestor.
Uh, President D F O.
Councilperson Thomas.
Here.
Councilor Chikowski.
Here.
Mayor motion.
Present.
Mayor, we have four present members, one by phone, I know a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite Reverend Pastor Hall to, uh, lead us in prayer.
Heavenly Father, as we come into this council meeting, it's opened up, Father, we ask that you would just allow there be peace throughout this meeting. Father, we ask that you would just guide this meeting according, Lord God, to how you would have it to be done, so that there is order in the city, Father God, and that the order that is brought to the city will bring prosperity, it will bring employment, it will bring opportunities. Father, we ask that there's any dissension, that, Lord God, that it will still be done peacefully, that, Lord God, because we can all agree to disagree at times, but that does not mean we need to be adversaries. So we ask your blessing on this meeting, and, Father, we just thank you in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The meetings have been circulated to, uh, other, the council members, um, has everybody had a chance to look at them? Has anybody, would anybody like to make a motion to approve them?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of our previous session of council of June thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Please call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilor Chikowski.
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes. At this time, I'd like to invite the public for any comments related to the, uh, agenda items only.
Okay, there's one item, my name's Ernie Telegraphers, twenty-nine bricks, is this open? The one item that I'm looking at that sticks out is Boozy Byron is getting paid for something that was done two years ago about plumbing inspection. Now, what role did he play that W E C or the other people that are involved in putting these sewers down, that they didn't do? What was that?
Well, first off, he's been approved as a plumbing inspector, which is different than what W E C is or anybody else. He is the plumbing inspector that the city hired. He did not give us an invoice until recently, so that's the reason why it took so long.
Okay, then you made a big deal about W E C.
They are an engineer, but this is not an engineering position, this is an inspector position, there's a big difference.
Well, they still should supply the city that when they're asking for funds or, or payments, uh, uh, on a timely matter, not two years later.
Well, they've got to do, just submit an invoice before they get paid.
Well, why didn't they, two years?
I couldn't tell you. This is for our plumbing inspector. Boozy.
Yeah.
Hmm? For work in the city of Monessen, yes, he's done all the plumbing inspections for the last, since January of twenty-two, I guess, twenty, yes.
So, moving forward.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm going to request Boozy that he does a monthly statement.
Well, it's about time.
I was not aware of this, so I'll, I'll take the hit and apologize for that, but he's gonna have to submit a monthly statement. So, moving forward, as the city, uh, inspe- plumbing engineer, uh, not engineer.
Inspector.
Inspector. He'll have to.
Okay, we're gonna have teeth built into it, like, if he doesn't do it, then he asks for money?
He doesn't do, he doesn't get paid.
For real?
How about that?
Okay.
Nobody gets paid if they, nobody gets paid unless they put an invoice.
Well, so far, a few items went through the last two meetings where they didn't supply the city with on-time invoices, and that's why I'm bringing it up.
Not sure I know who that might be.
Well, W E, uh, C, he brought it up, uh, last time, American. And so, nobody's following, uh, any protocols, as far as I see.
Who?
Boozy.
The, uh, agreement was originally quarterly, but we're gonna ask him to do it monthly.
He preferred.
He preferred monthly.
He preferred monthly.
When he study income. All right, that's about it for now.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My, my question would be, is Donald Boozy Byron a registered plumber to be able to do the inspections?
Yes, he is.
Since when did he get, uh, registered, because he was never registered before?
Well, you need to check it, because he is, he, and that's been for several years.
That's interesting news to me and a lot of other people who asked me to ask that question.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, let me ask another question while I'm here. You talk about, on page three, insurances and this and that, my understanding is there are a lot of outstanding, um, invoices for a lot of employees for the city, from the street workers, the in-house here workers, the police, et cetera, et cetera. Why are we not paying those or fulfilling those obligations for, some of them have been, haven't been paid for six to eight months? And why, why is it taking so long and these people's credit is on the line?
The employees, the employees have to submit their E O Bs.
Wait a minute.
You ask a question, I, I'm asking, give me an answer.
Let me finish, and then you could talk, and then I won't interrupt you.
You, you can ask, hey, wait till I finish.
That's you, I'm setting, you're, you're setting your own precedent.
You ask a question, I do have your answer.
Okay, the question is, why are you not paying them for six to eight months, their credit is on the line, they're on the line for credit, not you, for the remainder of the bill that they have to pay for insurance. I noticed that on the insurance part of it, thought I'd ask the question.
Okay, let me give an answer, which I tried to. First off, they have to file their E O B, when they file their E O B, there is a prime pay that they can get their money back almost immediately. The problem is, if you don't file for it, you don't get it. We don't know what they're, when they go to the doctor, they have to give us their, their explorational benefits that they get from their doctor. When they get that, they submit it, it get paid.
My understanding is that is not happening.
It's the employees, there's not payment.
There are three cases that we were dealing with, two have been rectified, there's one that we're finishing off.
How, what, you can't say the amounts because they're personnel? That's all right, I don't need, I don't need to know, but I know it's a lot of money.
Yeah, but they've been done, yeah, they've been done, and they're happy.
It was a vendor issue, is that correct?
Pardon me?
It was a vendor issue that needed to get rectified.
And we did, and we've been working with that to finish, yep.
Any other comments? Does anybody have any correspondents they'd like to introduce?
Hello, mayor.
At this time, I'd like to ask our solicitor for his report.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, everybody. Um, first, deals with nine-twenty Knox, that's the property that the city acquired, um, to install a portion of that Ninth Street pipe. Applied for, and the county granted a, a real estate tax exemption. Um, there may be some taxes that have accrued since the city owned it, you guys should look at that and exonerate those taxes, ask the school district and, um, the county to do the same. That's right across the street from Ninth Street Park.
I will check with the tax claim office.
Yep. I worked with the, um, city clerk regarding right-to-know requests. She's now registered with the state, uh, Office of Open Records as the city's open records officer, really by third-class city code, should be her, she's the keeper of, of all the city records. Uh, finally, we have demo hearings on July eleventh at five-thirty. That's all I have.
Thank you. Our city treasurer gave his report last time, and he's not present today, so we're not gonna worry about that. Does our city comptroller have anything to add?
Yes, Mayor. The general fund, Charleroy Federal Savings Bank checking account, the bank reconciliation as of May two thousand twenty-fourth, the beginning balance as of April twenty twenty-four was nine hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. Deposits made, one million eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety-nine cents. Expenses, seven hundred and sixty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars and sixty-eight cents. The ending balance as of May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four was one million, two hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and four dollars and fifty-six cents. The outstanding checks was four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-four cents. Outstanding deposits, one hundred and ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars and sixty-eight cents. The balance, and, and I think there was a correction, I don't know if you have the corrected one, but the balance reconciled as of May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four is nine hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars and ninety cents.
Thank you.
You're welcome, that's it.
I'm gonna hold off on my discussion till the end of my motions. Lois, would you do the honor of, uh, reading my motions for me, please?
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Valerie Hardison to the currently vacated position on the city of Monessen redevelopment to begin immediately and end on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Is there any questions? Or is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilor Chikowski.
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion for payment to W E C Engineering, Inc., for revised USDA Phase Three Amendment Number Five, and an agreed-to increase of two thousand sixty-six dollars under the terms of the contract.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Chikowski.
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Motion to pay Boozy Byron custom construction for plumbing inspections performed since January of twenty twenty-two in the amount of one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars as per city of Monessen purchase order P O two zero seven eight from the line usage fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilor Chikowski.
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes. Um, there's a couple of things that I've been, uh, thinking about for some time here, but we need to talk about safety within the city, that there is a, a, uh, issue where I think that, um, our traffic is starting to progressively get faster and faster and faster, we need to slow it back down. And I'm gonna ask our police department to increase their, their patrols on speeding. You come over the hill coming from Tyrol onto Grand Boulevard, and there's very few cars are going twenty-five, some of them are going fifty miles an hour, that's a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit. There's cars in driveways that are trying to pull out, by the time they pull out, you try to come to a stop, it's an issue. Speeding affects safety. There's just a, if you're driving too fast for road conditions, you need to slow down, regardless of what the speed limit is. If, if there's a bad weather, you pay attention to it, you need to slow down, if there's construction, we got lots of construction going around, around town, you need to follow the, the guidelines and, and go slower. At night, the road may not even be lit well in places, pay attention, slow down. Now, the first offense, I'd ask the police to give a warning, but the second offense, I hope that they will, and, and do citations. And there's lots of consequences to speeding. It's more than just breaking the law, it's the greater potential for loss of control of the vehicle, it reduces the amount of time allowed to respond to events. With summertime, we have our youth playing nearby, they're likely to run out in the street, keep an eye out for the youth. Deer are showing up all over the place, they're getting way too tame, they're showing up on roads, they're getting hit, that does damage your car, pay attention, just slow down, pay attention. What I intend to do is just increase the police traffic patrols for traffic violations. In the case of some, they make, you know, they need to give you a warning the first time, but if repeated, uh, violations should be asked for citation, you will be getting a citation. I'm asking everybody to share this information with your friends, your neighbors, I'm not trying to blindside anybody, pay attention to the speed limit, slow down, that's the biggest message I wanna say with that. Other than that, the week has been very busy with, uh, things happening. On the bottom of, uh, Ninth Street, as an example, we had a sinkhole open up in the middle of the, well, near the, the, the corner where it meets Schoonmaker. It turns out that the storm drain just up from that has a huge void that has eaten out, um, all the soil underneath the sidewalk, and the sidewalks collapsed, there's, the road is collapsing, it's gonna require some work, and I've asked our engineer to, uh, look into that. At the same time, up on the top of Ninth Street at Knox is a sheet, a piece of metal covering a hole. This hole is covering a big void in the road that was beyond what the Penn Vest project would take care of. He's going to, I've asked him to also attain, um, quotes on doing that. That'll require the installation of a storm drain and, and repair of the road itself as, as we go through that. That's, uh, the major issues I took care of this week. This time, I'd like to ask Councilman Anthony to, to give us his council finance report.
Mayor, before I do that, I have two things I wanna bring up.
Okay.
Okay. One, how did the, what's the word I'm looking for? Sil bids or the advertisement go that we, uh, we passed last meeting?
Bids for what?
Truck.
I think that, uh, by talking to you and so forth, we put those on hold until we can get a better understanding of what the trucks we have on, handle is.
I think we might wanna consider looking at that again.
Uh, I got no issue with that, but I would like to, uh, look at the possibility of getting the trucks we've got right now repaired and functional.
And what's going on, I know, I don't know if Karen would notice or anything, what's going on with the civic center?
In what respect?
That room that was supposed to get carpeted and done?
It, it did this week, the one room, um, and they're getting remnants for the rest of the building together. Uh, they were a little slow, Santori, on getting us the bids, uh, they apologized, so.
What rest of the building, there was only one room?
Well, we, we got every room looked at to see what remnants they might have to fit, and they're gonna give us an idea of what they have at a very low cost to see if we can do it. But we did the one room that was necessary, uh, to do.
Wait, we did it already?
We had to, we had to do it for a event that they're having, Lois, if you wanna add into the, uh...
I just, I, I just thought there were two, there were two rooms they were gonna do.
Yeah, I don't want the whole building done.
We don't have, no, no, just, just so we knew.
The one you did, but I thought there was another one they were gonna carpet too.
Okay, but yeah, we can just work with the...
Okay, so, so, you know, I told you we'd taken out a hard, that's not a problem.
Right.
But there's no P O that came across before the work was done, they even have an invoice.
I have an information from him on the amount, and I said we would put it in with the two rooms and the entire, same way we looked at some others, the entire situation there and then work from there.
But we're not doing the entire.
I understand, but you will have the number, so you know if you wanted to do it, what they have available with remnants and other material.
Okay, but that still doesn't change the fact that there's no P O and there's no invoice.
I think there's a P O that went in for the, the carpeting yesterday.
No, there's nothing.
All right, well, I'll check that out with, with Julie.
But the work was already done?
He, he, because of the fact that they needed something done out of courtesy, said, I'll put that in, and then we can work from there, it's gonna be the cheapest price, maybe even free, is what he indicated.
See, everybody's broken protocols and doing work.
That's a problem, in my opinion. I'm sorry.
I thought the motion, but I thought, didn't we motion to have it done?
We did, but you still needed to do a P O, and that's not getting done.
Okay.
That's right.
So, let's be consistent about that and be very clear that nothing, and I mean, nothing gets done unless there's a P O issued, it's been approved, and we have an invoice attached to it that's a valid invoice.
That's fair.
I mean, that is what our policy, we decided to do. So, Mayor, you wanna take the truck discussion at a different time, or how do you wanna handle it?
Well, the, uh, twenty sixteen truck, you approved the requisition yesterday to have that towed to, um, H P P in Youngwood, which specializes in it. The, I'm, presumably, that will happen tomorrow, they'll get it towed over there, and we'll get an estimate of what that's gonna take.
But this is totally separate of that, do we still wanna consider, 'cause I found another truck. And it's a hundred and fourteen thousand, but it has the plow package and everything on it already.
You better go and tell them.
So, I, I guess my, I wanna have a discussion that I don't wanna lose the opportunity while we have the funds to do something that has an impact like that, if that's a decision council wants to make, because it still takes time to do things.
Right.
And, you know, to find these things, they're, they're not always available around, this one's in Columbus, Ohio, so we'd have to get it flatbedded to come here, which is about a thousand to twelve hundred dollars, thirteen hundred dollars, which isn't bad, I mean, for what the size of the truck is, but, you know, we, we've bounced a lot of things off of what to do.
Right.
And the question is, is, I wanna, I want the ball to stop bouncing, and I wanna finally say we're gonna do something.
Okay, well, it's my opinion, and, and this is just my opinion, I'm not speaking for anybody else, but it's my opinion, we have four twenty sixteen F five fifty one-ton trucks, fully outfitted with, for salt spreaders and plowing the trucks. That is how many they typically run in the wintertime for doing their, their plowing and so forth. There is a fifth one that's in the, in the yard, that's a much older vehicle, they used to use that for a, a, could I, hey, could you guys co- calm down?
Please, thank you. I'm trying to hear the mayor.
There is a older vehicle in the yard that needs some serious work, how much that would cost, I'm really not sure. But that is only used when there is a problem, a temporary problem with one of the other four trucks, which may or may not happen throughout the winter. We could buy another truck, but I'm not sure that, I mean, it's gonna be a spare, is what it boils down to, we're gonna have at least, we're gonna have one more truck, functional truck, than what we really need to plow the roads, and they have the manpower to do. That's the only concern that I have.
I don't, I don't see that as a spare, that's gonna be probably our number one truck.
But one of them's gonna be a spare somewhere.
Right, well, it's one of the old, probably, the one that's sitting in the, in the garage, in the fenced-in area right now.
But that one's already a, a spare, so.
Right.
So we got four, four trucks, they're twenty sixteen.
But do you, I remember the last snowstorm, we had two trucks go down within the same night.
Right.
Right, and we can't, we can't afford to do it.
That's why we need to get them perfectly maintained right now, but, you know, we could go for another truck, I, I'm not gonna fight it, I just think that it might be superfluous when we have other expenses throughout the city.
I think that's a big part of our city, maintaining our streets and snow and everything.
I mean, the, the, the truck that I came across has the, uh, and it doesn't matter what, how the configuration is, and it has the, the bigger boss plow on the front, which is adjustable, which is electric, it's the big Vs that you see.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it would give some versatility, and the guys moving the snow. John's calling me. John, you there?
Yeah, I lost, uh, connection in the mountains, I'm down to Longhorn, can you hear me?
Okay, you, can you hear, you can hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you, yeah.
Okay. So, I, I guess the thing is, is we didn't get the one opportunity. I spoke to the gentleman about this one, I would ask our solicitor what's the best way of moving forward, unfortunately, that it's out of state, again, do we, how do we have to have you draft something up again? If that's the way course direction council wants to go?
It'll have to be bid unless they're registered for Co-Stars program.
And Joey's been nice enough to, he's going to get me some information on someone he knows that he's worked for other municipalities that's in Pennsylvania with Co-Stars, I mean, I'm not pushing, I want everybody to understand, I'm not pushing to say, oh, I went to one in Columbus, Ohio, or let's all look at this, I'm looking at what's available at this moment, that's sitting on the lot, ready to go, that can give the keys to Delmar or anybody else and say, here's your new truck, and go with it.
Ernie, go, Ernie, Ernie.
I have a que- I have a question, should we go ahead and motion to rescind the motion for advertisement that we did for last, our last meeting? Because we made a motion to advertise for our vehicle, which we never advertised, so should we make a motion to rescind the motion to advertise?
Uh, yeah, I mean, you have authority to advertise for a public works truck, we may need to tweak the legal advertisement at this point, Mr. Nestor.
Okay, 'cause we did make a motion to advertise, but if we're not gonna advertise, we'd have to make a motion to rescind that motion?
That's a question.
I don't think you need to take that action this evening.
Roger that.
So, we're not gonna, are we not going to do that motion to advertise, since we didn't do it?
Well, we already have a motion to advertise, so that's not the issue.
We can continue with it, that, that, so he does have to do it, okay.
Okay.
You just wanna make sure we're still doing that.
We'll see what Tony brings up next week.
So, I would, I would like to wrap this up within the next meeting or two.
Yes.
And I know it'll take that long, am I right, Joe, just to advertise, and how many times you have to advertise and all that?
Yeah, you gotta advertise twice.
Okay. And I spoke to the gentleman out there, and I can send out you guys all that information, so you all have it. You know, it's, it's just ready to go, kick the tires and away she goes. So, I just wanted to ask where we were and what direction everybody feels comfortable going. Thank you, oh, I gotta do my part, sorry. Then I'll pass, okay. Motion, uh, make a motion to pay the following invoices from the general fund, the amount of thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty-two cents. All invoices are attached, this agenda is attachment A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilor Chikowski.
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the park fund, the amount of one thousand six hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirty-seven cents. All invoices are attached, this agenda is attachment B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilor Chikowski.
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
I make a motion to pay the following invoices from the liquid fuels fund, the amount of two thousand three hundred and six dollars and sixty-six cents. All invoices are attached, this agenda is attachment C.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilor Chikowski.
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the refuge fund, the account of, in the amount of forty-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy-three cents. All invoices are attached, this agenda is attachment D.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilor Chikowski.
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the line usage account, the amount of thirteen thousand, nine hundred and five dollars. All invoices are attached as attachment E.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner.
Yes.
Councilman Nestor.
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas.
Yes.
Councilor Chikowski.
Yes.
Mayor motion.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the transfer of sixty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents from the general fund to the payroll account to cover payroll expenses.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Motion to pay retired healthcare benefits, the amount of ten thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars and thirty-four cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to transfer twenty-three hundred dollars from the general fund to the healthcare account for, for the period of June twentieth, two thousand, twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to transfer twenty-five hundred dollars from the general fund to the healthcare account for the paid period of July, of July third, two thousand, twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilperson Cosner?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilperson Thomas?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
And these are the balances as of today. ARP fund has a hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents. Debt service has one million, two hundred and fifty-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and ten cents. Fire escrow has twenty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars and thirty-eight cents. Grant fund has sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-one dollars and forty-five cents. Healthcare has four thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirty-three cents. Line usage has six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty-four cents. Liquid fuels has a hundred and six thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty-seven cents. Parks has one hundred and eighty-four thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty cents. Payroll has twenty thousand, one hundred and seven dollars and twelve cents. Rec fund has five thousand, ninety-one dollars and thirty-four cents. And the refuge has one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, four hundred, one hundred and forty-six dollars and ninety cents. And the general fund has nine hundred thousand, three hundred and eight dollars and thirty-seven cents. And that's my report, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Lois, do you have a report for us?
Good evening, once again. Our streets department report for May of twenty twenty-four. They picked up garbage twice a week downtown, marked fifty PA one calls. Cold patched several streets throughout the city, repaired two catch basins. Cut city lots, put in the boat ramp, planted the flowers at the East Gate Memorial, which looked beautiful. They put up new flags at the boat launch and East Gate and repaired tractors that were broken. Started repairs on trucks four and eight and helped the parks department as needed. That is my report, Mayor.
Thank you. John, do you have a report for us?
Uh, can everybody hear me?
I believe so.
All right, uh, Honorable Mayor, members of council, citizens of Menneson. Unfortunately, I will abstain from my report due to, you know, being behind the steering wheel, not able to read it. I will be giving my report if I make it in time, if the meeting is still going on, but if so, I will have to wait till the next present meeting, stated in July. Other than that, may I yield the floor? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cosner, would you like to give your report, please?
Yes, thank you. They picked up garbage and litter in the parks, cleaned the civic center as needed. Cut all the parks and ballfields, cleaned pavilions for events and helped the streets department as needed. And Rodney had a little blurb that he would like to thank all of the employees for their hard work preparing for Memorial Day weekend. I think everything looks really great. When I drive around and I've been in the parks, that they do a great job and they are to be commended. As I've been in city park and in input from people who want to purchase memorial benches. Have you all been in city park and you know, around, we have some brand-new ones? And then we have some benches that probably need to be replaced. And the, the topic came up is, how do you determine when those older benches need to go? If they're a safety issue or they're really unsightly? And I don't think that we have a policy, do we? In the past, that you determined this bench has to go, because all of them have little plaques on them. Some of them are probably decades old. So we need, I think, a policy and procedures to determine how long you keep those benches. And the other night, I went online and it seems like a lot of the cities have procedures in place for how you go about purchasing a bench or a tree or renaming a street after someone. And all of their procedures are online, so I just cut and paste some things to have some ideas. But I think moving forward, we probably need to have our own. And I'd like to maybe have a committee or somebody to work on a policy for the benches, renaming streets. I mean, what do y'all think about, about that? Have you ever thought about it? How, how do you determine, even renaming certain things? How do you do that? So it's equitable to everyone who makes a request.
That's an interesting challenge that we, we face. Something that occurred to me, what if we were to come up with some sort of Hall of Fame for the city? Recognizing the people in the city that have done great things for the city and so forth. And we maybe have a committee that determines who gets on this wall and who doesn't. Just an idea. I mean, I could even envision something here in the, in the foyer, in the plaza between the two buildings.
I mean, it's, it's a thought, but I think we do need a policy that, that everybody has the same chance and everybody. I come from the school system, so we always gave grades. When you did anything, you made sure that no one could doubt your choice based on a numerical scale or whatever it was. So I think it's a good idea. I mean, we have had so many people that constantly give back to members, to, to Menneson, whether they're still living or, I don't know. I think it's a good idea. Do we have volunteers to work on this little committee, do you think?
Well, I think it's something we'd have to, to decide if that's really what we want to do and, and move forward with it.
Throw some ideas around.
Yeah.
Most of those benches are first despite.
You can't, we're finished.
I brought my brother this.
Does anybody else have any ideas, suggestions?
As far as the benches that are in disrepair, if you ever do decide to get rid of those, you don't want to get rid of the plaques. You may want to find, you have, you have a city park, you may want to install something where you put those plaques on there so they're not just thrown away, that they do know that there was a bench, you know, when it does.
Please wait.
Right, right, right.
Please wait.
You know, just so they don't feel bad that their bench is gone. You don't want to get rid of the plaques. So you want to find a way to still show those, even if you have to get rid of the bench.
Right. Presumably, we could come up with a place where we displayed all these and we continue to display the, the, the plaques.
And it would be nice that somehow, some way, if somebody was still living, you could send a letter, let them know about that.
Well, absolutely.
And that's what all of these do, is they, they do exactly what you're talking about.
Very good. Let's continue this discussion and maybe you can present some, some suggestions, the next one.
Okay, I'm always good for some thought. But can I tell about the camp today?
Absolutely.
Those of you who attend on a regular basis know that today was the first day camp that we had scheduled in Menneson City Park. And Penn State Extension are the ones who came and they had four different topics. We had sixteen participants, sixteen young people, and I think that they enjoyed themselves. I'm hoping they did. But it was a really good experience because they were exposed to areas for which they had, it was out of their realm of comfortability. And I think it went really nice. The next one is Thursday, July twenty-fifth. So if you know of any young people who would like to attend, please let them know so that we can have a higher enrollment. But I think, I think it did well. I was, I was pleased, so. It's our first one and it was a beautiful day. It couldn't have been better. And also, our community flea market, don't forget to take your information. Put it on Facebook. That's all I have.
Very good. Yeah, I think that that went over very well this afternoon. We stopped by at the very end of it. And it was clear that the kids had enjoyed it immensely, that they demonstrated some leadership qualities, that, that so forth. It was, it was an impressive group. Thank you. I appreciate your, your putting that together. I really do. Well, at this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comment directed to the mayor on any items related to business, ordinances, statutes, resolutions, or daily work product and the attention of the city of Menneson.
In conjunction with what you were just saying, and I raised my hand, there was a policy in place with Dr. Marty Dudes about five years ago. Because what happened is the bunch, the benches that were purchased from Joseph's Nursery and then they installed them. The concrete on the bottoms of the benches, and I think at a meeting, Tony Orzakowski mentioned one time that we got to get rid of some of these benches, they're, benches, they're hazard. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought you did. And some of them were changed. Some were taken out. I guess they were in bad shape. But the issue is now you have this plastic that's a lot better than the older benches that are wood. Secondly, you have my permission on Forest Street to remove the bench that I put in twenty years ago that's falling apart, but I see that they leave it up. I mean, it's, it's a hazard because the wood's been ripped off of it, some other stuff. And there's severe flooding down there all the time, too. It was a nice bench for the bus stop, but it's not anymore. But that's an example of the benches that are up at the city park that are decaying. We, we sent a letter out, I'm saying, we, Marty had a letter sent out on behalf of the committee. If you would like to replace that bench with a more modern, plastic-made, compressed-plastic-made bench, and that's what you see up here now. It's an oatmeal color. There, I think there's a red one up there. And there are a couple, two or three other colors that you can get. So, I mean, it's a thought. Marty's gone, but he had a good idea and, and they went after it. They had some of the benches removed. But as I said, I thought you made the comment that maybe we ought to get rid of them. They were hazard, there were a couple, the concrete, they were actually tilted. But at least give the people an opportunity to replace the bench. Secondly, I want to talk about R V E. Two years, they never got a grant for Shellroy, but we're hiring them to get grants. We have a grant group in Urban Design Ventures that is a nominal fee, not a twenty percent fee, as was mentioned here at a meeting. Not an eighteen percent fee that was mentioned at a meeting and also put in the newspaper. It was a nominal fee. A guarantee with especially C D B G funding, and it's a constant flow. Tony, you made a comment in the paper after two meetings ago, and then it was adjourned, failed, tried to get a chance to make a, a comment on it. It's not going to cost us anything. It's not going to hurt anything. And what could we possibly get out of it? It is tremendous if they follow through. Why would we worry about if they're going to follow through when we already have a guarantee with Urban Design Ventures? That's a little baffling. Secondly, Cheryl Gordon's gone. She filled out the applications with Urban Design Ventures. You signed them. Done deal. I believe she was forced out, obviously she was. Then we went to W E C Engineers. They saved five point two million on a project. We could do other streets. And now we treat them not particularly well, being polite in saying that. You're going to get rid of a guarantee of grants. It just doesn't make sense. If you haven't received a dime from the state two, two years, are you looking at possibly pushing yourselves towards Act Forty-seven? Is that one of your options? Because you're not even close to doing it. But if that's your method, it, it's not a good one. It's just unconscionable. I hate to see it happen. I think, you know, better operations are there and you're getting rid of a lot of quality people and making people that have done a good job for a long time really sweat it out, and that's not fair.
So, um, thank you very much for your comments.
I want to bounce off the diving board with them. You started your administration in January by bringing this lawyer that specializes in Act Forty-seven. And that never left my mind.
Which lawyer is that?
That one lawyer you brought down. He specialized in Act Forty-seven.
I didn't know who he is.
Michael Foreman.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, he's, he's D C E D. He's not a lawyer, but.
You brought somebody that specialized?
No, they came to me and asked me if I wanted to go Act Forty-seven. Not once, but twice.
Then why didn't you invite him?
I did not invite him. They came to me. Listen to what I'm saying. They came to the city. When we took office, we had eight thousand dollars in the bank. We had payroll to make. We had to borrow money from the line usage fee. When that occurred, that triggered a thing in, in Harrisburg that said, we qualified for Act Forty-seven. They came to us, not once, but twice, and asked if I wanted to go Act Forty-seven. Two times, I said no. They, their Act Forty-seven program was a five-year program. I had four years at that time to, to do things, so.
All right, it's just that, John Nestor, are you on the line? John, okay. Since you didn't buy my last newspaper, the Penn Telegraph, what you did now, talking on your phone. I brought it up, the Senate of Pennsylvania, May Day ordinance. You cannot talk on the phone anytime while you're in the car, even Bluetooth.
No, you, you can't hold the phone in your hand.
No, also, I, I read the thing.
And it doesn't take effect until January first.
The only time you could use it, if you pull off and dial nine-one-one, okay?
Can I dial nine-one-one now? Because you're driving me up a cliff.
But anyway, what I want to say is, I think you were in violation there. And, and I'm not picking on you to get a ticket. I'm just telling you, you guys don't follow the order.
Take place until the beginning of next year.
If it makes you feel any better, I am on a Bluetooth headset. I am in West Virginia, so I don't think there are laws.
Oh, you're in West Virginia, okay. But, okay, well, you, you're okay as long as you're in West Virginia. But anyway, now, I want to go back here to Tony. Who is authorized to purchase vehicles?
It's council as a whole.
Council as a whole. Then why is it all thrown on Tony?
It's not being all thrown on Tony.
Well, no one else is coming up with any figures.
Well, it's his initiative.
Okay, and I want to know, shouldn't also Lois Thomas be involved because this is a street? And also street, but who handles the street?
We're supposed to advertise for it.
Yeah, but street too. There should be some cooperation.
I wouldn't even, I'm going to be honest, I wouldn't know the first thing about any truck that they would need. That's why we trust Rodney to get with our crew here.
Okay, you've been talking to Rodney?
Yes, we have, constantly, constantly.
What did he say about that vehicle you picked up?
Well, he liked the other one. Unfortunately, we lost that one, so we're looking for whatever's out there.
Okay, I want to know, whatever happened to your contact in McKeesport or White Oak, where you guys used to get your equipment machines? What happened to that? And it was a Pennsylvania outlet.
Ernie, I wasn't involved in that.
Okay, well, what happened to that? Who cut off these past connections?
I know nothing about it.
And now we're forced to go out of state?
Look, no, no, let's clear something up here. I, when you, if you go out simply to Commercial Truck Trader on the internet, you can get a plethora of trucks all over the place that are from Maine all the way to California. I'm just looking to see what's available, what's the price, where they're located and is available now. I don't think, if we're going to do this, I don't want to place an order for a truck and tell the street crew, well, it'll be in six to eight months and the snow's flying. I want something that's actually, that you can physically touch, it's ready to go, we have the money, we can pay cash, it's not an issue. But you got to find the vehicles. It's like a couple of years ago, and the chief knows this, trying to find the police cars a couple of years ago, they were non-existent. During COVID, you didn't get nothing.
Well, that's COVID. Right now, we're talking about who is handling this? Just you?
I'm doing what I can. And I'm, I'm trying to keep, I'm keeping rest of council informed. And it doesn't matter if it's me, or it's Lois, or the mayor, or Mike.
It should be joint. It should be joint.
We are joined.
It is daily work. We are day working closely with Rodney, believe me, because they're the ones that know what they need to use. So we are relying on them and then from there, we go and seek out what they need.
Okay, there's something else. You're saying you want increased police activity on our streets?
Police patrol, yes.
Yeah, I've been observing. They, they've been very active. I, I see them always pulling people off. Now, if you're that concerned, where you don't need to have them going around like Speedy Gonzales, why don't you put speed bumps?
Those are not approved.
They're not approved?
Pendot has to approve those. You just can't put a speed bump in and say, here it is. You need Pendot. No, but you still need to have Pendot's approval before you can even.
Even if it's through a street?
You have to have Pendot's approval.
Okay, because we don't know these.
You asked the question and now we, now you know.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, and some thirty-five.
Anything else?
Yeah, I just want to know, what, what are you going to do for your upcoming meeting? What announcement you got, you're working on?
What's that?
I don't know. What are you working on? I don't know, what are you working on?
Okay, thank you, Ernie.
Ricardo Hall, 1224 Maple Avenue in Menneson. I've got two things. In the alley behind our house on Maple, there's a tree that is hanging way over and down in the alleyway. So, if anybody wanted to pull down into that alley, they would be stopped right when they get behind my house. I'm not sure if somebody owns the house behind me, or if it's vacant. And I was wondering if the city would be able, because I think it was cut down before over the alley, but I wasn't sure if it was the city or somebody that lived in that house.
You know what the address of that house is, and I'll check on it?
No, I don't, I just noticed, well, it's right behind me, 1224 Maple Avenue. Right, but I'm not sure the address of the house. Well, the branches are way, hanging way over and down in the alley, so nobody could drive down there. Because I could, you can look down the alley, you can see where they cut the grass in the alley up to the tree on both sides and stop, so...
Well, it's our responsibility to try to do something with alleys, and we're way behind on that because there's just more alleys than we've got manpower to take care of. But if it's a tree in somebody's yard, it's their responsibility. Now, whether they're responsible people is a different issue.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I don't know if anybody's living in that house or what, and I just know it's...
And I will try to check on that.
It's over.
I'll check on that in the morning and try to determine that.
The second thing is, uh, on Reed Avenue, I work at the SPHS building on 414 Reed. And when you come out of that parking lot between 414 Reed and the SPHS housing complex, a lot of people, whether they're visiting, people in the housing complex, or the family center, when they come out of that driveway, they turn right onto that one-way street going down to the Vidaup. And there's also cars coming up from Sixth, from the beginning of Sixth and Reed, down that alley, that one-way street. And eventually, there's going to be an accident down in that corner, because a lot of people, they know that it's a one-way street, so they're not really paying attention when they get ready to turn up that street and a car's flying down that street. And there are a lot of cars that have to pull off to the side because cars are coming down that street.
Absolutely, and it's not limited to that, that one-way street either. In fact, Karen was pointing out to me that she works at the library, worked at the library, and she saw a couple of times when cars were going one way, the wrong way, on Donner. So, yeah, that's the point, is people have got to start paying more attention. And we need to start trying to be safe when we're driving around.
Okay, but I was wondering, there could be a sign put up at that entrance with that, just that people that might not know, they just might be coming down, that that is, you cannot make that right-hand turn.
I thought it had one, right?
No, there's not, not coming from between 414 Reed and the SPHS building. There's no sign, they're saying that you can't turn right.
And you say right, yeah, okay, that's a good point.
Thank you.
Anything else? I would like to recognize somebody that's here with us this evening. George Morgan IV is visiting our country, he lives in Madrid, Spain, and he's got his lovely wife here from, that, that's France, from France. But anyway, he is the fourth grandson of the famous Morgan Avenue that we have in town, is that correct?
Great-grandson.
Great-grandson. So, thank you for coming back to the city of Menneson.
George Orlando I is up there in the white picture. I gave that, I brought that here to the city about three or four years ago at the request of some people here. He's the first, I'm the fourth.
Well, very good, and as I understand, there's a sixth now?
There's a fifth, and the sixth has decided to call himself William.
Okay. Well, very good, and welcome, welcome back to the city, it's always a pleasure to see you.
Thank you. We've driven around yesterday and today, and I have two comments, okay? One is, I don't know if the police have radar capabilities to slow people down on some of these streets.
Unfortunately, cities cannot use radar yet, or only state police can use radar.
Uh, okay.
There's other ways of doing speed detection, though.
The other thing is, um, there's a lot of abandoned properties, some of which could be saved, okay? And that's kind of what we're trying to do, we're looking for funding, obviously. I think somebody in the city needs to come up with ideas to attract people to come here.
No doubt. And there's lots of things going on that hopefully will work out. The people across the way right here have a, a program where they're building five new homes on Motherall up there. Those homes should be in place by September. Now, these are modular homes that are built in a factory. One day, you're going to find them out there cleaning out the lot, the next day, you're going to see a crane there, and he's going to take these modules and just stack them up, and, and two days later, you're going to have a constructed house. That's the amount of time it takes to do that. They've been, um, they're also working on 10 more houses that will be on McNan going on, and also over towards 10th Street. So, there's a total of 15 homes that they're working on there. Something to pay attention to is, most of this property that you're looking at is behind on taxes in big ways, and it's difficult to get those taxes addressed. The easiest way to do that is for them to go through a judicial process. When they go through the judicial process, it removes all the, the, the liens, taxes, and so forth. The only thing that doesn't get rid of is federal liens, and there's a couple of places that we can talk about on that, too. But once they do that, they make the determination of, is this house rehabilitatable? And they, they do have some funding for rehabilitation of houses, and we're working with them on some programs where we might do that very soon on some houses. But in most cases, the cost to rehabilitate them is greater than the cost of what the houses would be if it was rehabilitated, you could build a new house. So, hence, they demolished a lot of the houses. As I said, there's some programs going on that, that will be talked about in the near future about them rehabilitating some houses. Because there's been so many people that have approached them, they've come up with a program that they only allow certain developers access to those houses that are going to be rehabilitated. And those developers are controlled by the county, so, um, there, there's some, there's a lot of things going on with that, but hopefully, we're going to have some thing, some new, new places for people to live very soon.
Did Josh ever get any headway? He came and spoke at the last meeting, it was, he went up to the county for a $3,500 property next to Douglas Education Center, a duty-tion area, and then by the time he was done, they tried to charge him $11,000.
I couldn't tell you, you'd have to talk to...
I mean, I thought you said you were following up on that.
Well, I'm trying to follow up on those things, but those, I think that that was acquired by the landbank. One, one thing that the landbank has the ability to do is, they have precedence over anybody else. So, if they want a property that goes through judicial, they say, "I want this property, that property, and this one," they get those properties, you can't, you can't fight that. Well, but let me also finish. There is a building on the end of Motherall, it's actually on Sixth Street, this is a red wood building. This building is in horrific shape. About a month ago, two months ago, I contacted our, our federal senators, senators and congressmen and asked them to work with the IRS because there is a $1 million lien on that property by the IRS. They cannot remove that via the judicial system, it is a federal lien. This property is going to hurt somebody, we're going to push it through public hearings and get it demolished. The, the, the senate, it was actually, Russell Zoller did the best job for us. He actually contacted the IRS, worked through the IRS process. IRS basically said, "We cannot, we cannot extinguish that lien." They want to keep the lien, but they don't care about the building. So, that lot will be a vacant lot, it'll probably sit there until eternity, until they give up trying to collect a million dollars on vacant lot. It's hard to deal with.
Linda Lacy, 1624... Linda Lacy, 1624 Maple Avenue. My question is to, I think it's Karen, when you were talking about City Park and the benches. Okay, my question is, do you know we only have three pavilions up there?
Three pavilions and then one I call a shelter. Well, yeah, I know, yes.
Okay, I think that if you put pavilions up there, more people can utilize the park because, more than benches. Because I don't think there's been a new pavilion up there since I was a little kid, and that was probably 50 years ago.
Well, maybe if we get grants that to be something talked about, but I wonder, I don't know who, with the booking of the pavilions, if there've been so many requests that you, we've never been able to handle them, do you know?
I'm not aware of that at the time.
That would be a question that I would ask before I'd push for a new one. Maybe just fixing up the ones we have, I mean...
Well, there's a, there's one up there that is historic. I understand you can only do so much of that, but there's only two, there's one big one, I think, one other one.
And then the one shelter that's over sort of near the, where the tank is. It's not a pavilion, but you get a picnic there.
Yeah, well, that's just like a platform with steps, I mean, that was very...
It has a roof. It has a roof.
That's a historic one, that's historic.
They have aluminum roofs?
No, it's like two tables in there or something like that.
Right up from the tank.
Right from the tank.
Yeah.
And, um, Mr. Orzekowski, Tom, Mr. Orzekowski. When you were discussing the Civic Center, there was already money allocated for the Civic Center, which included the carpet. And if I have to go back through my notes and read it, because it was $43,000 in some, 43 something, I don't know if it's 43,700, but you took $13,000 away from them and left the Civic Center like $34,000 and something? But the carpet was included in that estimated price, estimated price. So, I don't know how come you didn't know that, because we discussed it like three or four times. Because it was a concern...
That was CDVG money, I'm guessing you're talking...
Correct.
Yeah, I don't get involved in CDVG money.
Well, you were at our discussion, when we were discussing it, because I was wondering where the $13,000 went, and what were you going to do with the rest of the money for that? And then that's when they got the new stove, I think, and they did the handicap ramp. That was all included in everything, and so was the carpet in two offices or three? I can't remember now, because that was either late September or first part of March, and I, I have notes on it, but I didn't know that was going to be a topic this afternoon.
If I'm correct, I think that 13 went to the handicap ramp.
Right.
Yeah, but what I'm saying, it was also estimated for all the carpeting that was done in there. Because, see, we saved money because you said Apex did the floor for free for the gym, so that was extra money.
The, for whatever it's worth, that was 2021 money, that expired the end of May.
Well, why wasn't it used then?
I think it all was used, but we can get a full accounting of that money, too.
No, he said he don't get into CDVG money, so... And before Don Gregor retired, I asked him about, I'm getting estimates. And he couldn't get estimates, because that was going against the Sunshine Act. But you could get estimates for the truck, and he couldn't get it for repaving the tennis court? Or doing, or investigating into a pickleball court? He wasn't authorized to do that?
He didn't do that, he couldn't get a contractor to come up and give him a price, if I remember.
Right.
There's still, there's, there's nothing to do with Sunshine or anything, he was...
But that's what he said, he said he couldn't go out and get an estimate for it.
No, that's not true, just a little different than Karen to go out and say, "I'm running, I want a pickleball court up here."
That's what I asked him, couldn't somebody that's on the board get, just call a company and get an estimate?
You can get estimates now, now if, if it...
And he said no.
If it exceeds a certain threshold, then you have to go out for bids. That's the only caveat to that whole thing. What is that, 13.5?
Four quotes and 23.6, or something close to it for public sealed bids.
Yeah.
Okay, I have another comment, but I'm going to keep this one to myself. Thank you.
My name's Bob Stark, I live on 39 Colonial Drive. My main reason for being here is, back in December, the 26th, I proposed a letter to the mayor. And that was for my retention on the city police and accountability board to retain my seat, the five-year seat, okay? Never heard anything from anybody. Then in March, I approached you again and said, "Has anything come about with that yet?" You said, "No, we're not even working on that stuff yet." Now, it's June.
Right.
Okay, what I want to know is, there's nobody on that accountability board right now.
Nor has they, have they had a meeting called?
Can't have a meeting and call when there's nobody there.
Right. And maybe one doesn't work either, so...
I want to know whether I'm retaining my five-year seat. I want you guys to say yea or nay, that's what I'm here for. This goes back to December. Karen, I was on when we first got started, we were the first people on that board. All I'm looking for is a yea or a nay of my retaining my seat of five years on this board.
When, when was it to be expired?
At the end of last year, December. Yep, I was up until December. That's why I put this in, so it would be brought up at the January meeting.
You want the good news?
Yes.
By law, you're still a member of that board until somebody replaces you.
Okay, well, there's no one to replace me, because there's no one there.
My recommendation to council is maybe you advertise for it, put Mr. Stark on the agenda. But until you're replaced, you're still a board member, that's just...
Okay, there you go, chief, we still have a board, because we had a long talk about it, okay? That's good to know, okay? You're still on a board, too, then?
I can't be on the board now, but what about Butch, he was on the board.
Everybody was gone except for me, well, there's one more that expires at the end of this year. I experienced it last year, and we had our four plus the mayor at that point.
Is it possible to re-advertise for all the open positions? He was shit.
We need to make a motion this time.
I've had a few people ask me about your board, about being on your board, yeah.
I mean, I even approached you, Mayor, back when we still had people on the board, to chair that committee.
Right.
Okay, and Karen knew that I did that, and that never went anywhere yet, so, I mean, with the stuff that goes on with the boards, is there truth to these boards? I want to know.
To some of them, to some of them, there's not.
Okay, so if something would happen, it would have to pull the police in. I want to sit there by myself, me and Dave, right now.
Right now, that would be the case, I guess.
I'm just trying to find out the facts behind it, that's all I want to know, if something would happen, okay? Because Karen can't be on, because she just said that, because she's on council.
There would not be a quorum on that board.
No.
So, you're not going to be able to operate.
So, that's what I'm saying, it's not operable, okay? So, I got to reapply again to something I already applied for. I should already be, this should have been voted on in January to get you on it for the next five years. That's what I want, that's what I'm here for. Let's get some hands up in here, here, come on, you in favor of it?
Did you send a, did you send a letter in?
Yes, I did, it's right here in my hands. Here's my letter.
Was there a motion to appoint him then?
When was this letter?
On the 26th of December.
We get letters, we...
I submitted that here back in December, yes, I did, 26th.
We would have, we would have advertised for all boards.
We did, we did.
And this came in?
And just his came in?
I don't know that, one way or the other.
Yeah, I mean...
I mean, that's when I did it, on the 26th, because I wanted it in, because I expired at the end of the year. And I asked for retention of my five-years seat, that's all I asked for.
Yeah, put it on, put it on the...
Put it on the next meeting, that's all we can do.
Appoint you, reappoint you.
Can I make a copy?
You can have that, I got more, how many you want? I brought copies, you can have one, too, Ms. Thomas.
Thank you.
But yeah, that was submitted.
It'll be our next meeting.
And I never heard anything, and I figured, well, maybe just things happen, okay?
It's a four-member board plus the mayor.
And by rights, if you look at police accountability boards, mayor can't be on it in a second or third-class city, because he appoints police officers and the chief. So, you can't, he can't sit on the board.
So, the ordinance itself says the mayor's on the board and he...
But if you look at all the other boards, when I met with the guys from the city of Pittsburgh, they make the recommendations to the mayor on things... they make the recommendations to the mayor on things that... What happens.
We probably need to take a look at that ordinance because of that, too.
Yeah, because that's the way the board is set up. It brings all recommendations to the mayor.
No, that makes...
Yes.
Kind of why I asked the question.
I can show you the stuff from Pittsburgh's. I mean, I have their layout.
Yeah, it makes sense. It's his police department and...
Exactly. So I hear something. That's what I'm here for.
We're going to have to go through the next council meeting before we can do anything. But the next time, we're going to have to... We've already advertised, we're already advertising. We can re-advertise if we need to.
You have one candidate.
Yeah, we already have one.
Sounds like you don't have anybody else, so you probably should take somebody to volunteer.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
No, we suggested that they re-advertise again for all the open positions.
Or anybody that you know that wants a position, send a letter.
Yeah, not just for that.
For whatever, yes.
Ed LaFever, Keystone Drive. I just have one comment, and this may involve the police department. On Tuesday, there was a baseball game at the Meneson Park Ball Field. I know... My wife and I know this young woman, and she has three sons, and one of them is around seven to eight-year-olds. So these teams... The two teams up here on Tuesday were made up of seven and eight-year-olds, and there were younger parents there. She complained, not that she wanted me to say anything, but she talks... She comes and visits. She said it was so terrible on Tuesday up there. The youngsters in the community, they came into the crowd, they were using foul language, they were disruptive, and they kept doing this throughout the game. And this young woman told me she saw a police car, but it drove around the fence area. I think this shouldn't happen in a public like this. If the police department... If this is part of the police department's job of orderliness, then I think an officer should... This is my opinion now, an officer should be there. These young... These youngsters, many of them, just walked around the crowd in the bleacher. I think that was completely wrong. So if you're going to have... There's going to be additional games up there for these seven, eight-years-old baseball. Something needs to be done. The language was horrible. That's my comment about it. I think the police should act... How many are on the force right now?
Thirteen, well, probably eleven right now.
You know, what does the ordinance... The Meneson ordinance say about the number of officers for Meneson?
I don't think it specifies.
What we try to do is keep at least two officers on duty at all times.
Okay, but do you agree with that, that there should be...
Well, I agree that first off, that shouldn't happen. It should first off fall on the parents. And the organizers of the event need to work with the parents to get that corrected. The police can show up. If there's... If you call the police and say, "We've got a problem here that's unruly, there's violence going on" or something like that, the police will be willing to show up. But we don't have enough officers to be at every single baseball game, football game, soccer game, or street game that's going on.
This was a night game, this was...
But the point being is, that is the organizer of that event that really should be talked to. That organizer...
And what's the organizer supposed to do?
Well, they're the ones that organize the event. They should maintain control. If they can't maintain the control, they can place a phone call to the police. Exactly. I'm not saying the police won't respond if the police are called, but I can't say that I'm going to tell a police officer, "He's got to go to all the different games that occur throughout the city."
I understand, but I guess this was unusual since it was a night game at eight o'clock and this wasn't a day game. That's one of my comments.
Well, and maybe they show up, but... And that's the school, the school...
The school hires.
Yeah.
City police for high school football games.
One other comment. Evergreen Avenue by the cemeteries. Reading the ordinance, not the ordinance, but the statement in the code for a third-class city, it actually states that the city can actually be involved in paving that.
There's no doubt. Nobody said we couldn't. The problem is, we don't have the money to do that.
But I guess what I'm talking about is only the one section that borders the Catholic cemetery.
Okay.
And it... I'm talking about the length where, before it curves up in front of Grandview.
I understand what you're talking about. No, it's more than 100 feet.
You know, just as an incident...
Five or six hundred.
Years ago, thirteen years ago or more, I worked with Bob Billick with his funerals. And there was this one funeral, pretty high class. It was a woman that was from Meneson, and she had started her career in Washington, DC, and that's where she stayed. These people came in all sorts of expensive cars and trucks, and you could tell they were upper-class.
Right.
I was embarrassed. I was embarrassed for the street. They had to go on.
I understand. What I would like to see happen is a rating system put together for the streets of concern. And this could be as many streets as people, as we can afford to have them rated. But one rating would be, how many... How bad is the street? Ten being the worst and zero being the best. And I'd rate that a 10. The second would be, how many people use that street?
Many.
Okay, so you rate it, what, many? Compared to Donner, is it maybe a five or a six?
Pretty close.
Not 2,000 vehicles a day.
I used to walk up around there, and I tell you, there's a lot of traffic.
There's a lot of traffic. We need to see if we can borrow a traffic counter from PennDOT to really quantify that a little bit better. The third one was, what is it going to cost to fix it? Zero being the most expensive and 10 being the least expensive. The problem is, you can rate 10 on the first two. It needs it real bad, there's lots of traffic, but it rates zero on the funds because we just can't get the funds. CDBG will not fund that. And we don't have capital... There hasn't been a capital project in so long, I can't remember.
But you know that street isn't even good for chips and oil.
I understand.
It's beyond that. It's not...
I've been on that street many times, it's bad.
Very, very bad.
Yeah, there is no base put to it, there's potholes, there's no drainage for it, it's just... It's a horrible road.
Yes, it is.
Probably doesn't get plowed. I don't know, the answer to that.
One other thing, Mayor. What is the status? I noticed back in February, I was looking through old articles of this year, the visionary group that you put together, is it active?
It's active when we call them and try to get something going.
But it should be a constant thing, should it not?
It should. And really, what they've got to do is put together some recommendations to take it to the wider group of people is what it really needs to happen.
Then this isn't happening.
Not so far.
You need to boost them up.
Yeah, I do.
Did you get PennDOT to approve of that closure?
For which closure? Yes, 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 we got the parade permit, yes, yes, we did. Well, that's what it is, it's a parade permit.